Call the order of the Southern County Board of Education meeting in December 2025. Consent agenda.
To this line, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands on its nation, under God, in the business of what there is in this world.
First order is to approve the agenda, Mr. Austin.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Your superintendent for this call.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would like to ask the board, correct your attention to your board packet where we have the TSI, ATS, and CSI information that was in there for your review. Also, I have three items for executive session or three topics that I would like to ask the board to consider at that time. I have personnel contract matters for executive session, a property contract matter for executive session, and early graduation requests for executive session. So the board could please consider all three of those. I would greatly appreciate it. I want to welcome our guests that we have here with us today, and we are excited today to be able to recognize state champions from some of our fall sports that have just concluded. We have some individual state champions, and we have a team state champion here today. So we will start out today with an individual state champion. I'd like to ask Mr. Shane Jones, Principal of the Soto Central High School, if they'd come forward at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Austin, and thank you, school board members. It's my honor to reintroduce Kaia Robinson to you. As a freshman, she won two individual swim championships. She did it again her sophomore year. And this year, as a junior, she won the individual state swim championship in both the 50-yard freestyle and the 100-yard butterfly. So at this time, I'd like to recognize from the Soto Central High School, Ms. Kaia Robinson.
We'll take a picture here. One of our parents get the best picture they can get. Great, congratulations. Next up, we have Mr. Jacob Strickland, Principal of Olive Branch High School.
Good morning. Afternoon, Mr. Austin. Good afternoon, board members. The two members I'm going to introduce is our cross-country coach. He is also one of our ROTC instructors. When he took over our program four years ago, he had two females and one male runner. That was it. And in those four years, he's now had two state champions and, I believe, three top-10 team finishes. So this coach has shown he what an invested coach, what a ballroom coach can do to change the lives of individuals. Dynamite comes in small packages, but I will let Gunny Sergeant McGuinness introduce her. So at this time, Gunny Sergeant, come on up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, board members. I'd like to first, so this is my fourth year coaching Olive Branch, Charles Country High School. It's also Macon Johnson's fourth year running for Olive Branch Cross Country. So I've had her, I've had the privilege to coach here in the last four years. With Macon, she epitomizes just her dedication and drive over the past four years, her consistent improvement throughout cross-country. I've had the privilege to coach here under numerous records. His PR and her drive and dedication culminated this year, being named the MHS AA 6A State Champion. She also set the Olive Branch High School girls' 500-meter record this year in the state meet. But above the athletic achievements that she's achieved at Olive Branch, what stands out to me is her drive and dedication and her scholastic excellence is on par with her athletic achievement. And she's someone of great high character. She's got great leadership capabilities, and I'm just extremely proud to be her coach and to have the opportunity to help her to coach her one more year at Olive Branch High School and to help her strive and achieve her dreams that she wants to achieve moving forward.
You want to give her a name, what she won?
Oh, she won the MHS AA... Yeah, she won the MHS AA 6A Individual Girl State Champion.
Great, congratulations. Next up, we have a team state championship. I'd like to ask Mr. Dwayne Case, Principal of Fernando High School, if they'd come forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Austin. Thank you, Mr. Austin, to the board members. We have several of our runners that participate in those sports, and they're going to try to play soccer tonight. So they're gearing up right now as we speak, getting ready to go head out. So we don't have all of them here, but we do have a handful of them here. And I'd like to introduce our two coaches. They've done a great job, and this starts in June. It's 7:00 in the morning. These kids run at least four days a week at 7:00 in the morning in the summer. And so, and then it ends up in October and early November. And so they put in a lot of time, and they log a lot of miles. But our two coaches are very dedicated and do a great job with it. And I'm going to ask them to come forward and introduce the girls. It's Mary Sata Foster and Lane Carter.
Thank you, board members. Yes, we've worked really hard. This is also my fourth year. Coach McGuinness and I both started the same year, and I was given a program that was already very leveled up, and I wanted to maintain that. And we have, and we've just had great girls. And guys, our boys finished higher than they ever have, fourth in the state in 7A. So that's one of the highest that the boys team has accomplished. And we had a boy fifth overall as well. So the programs really stayed at the level and leveled up a bit just as the years go by. So I'm going to introduce the ones that are here, and I'll say the names of the ones that are not. So when I call your name, just come on up. We've got Abby White. She finished sixth overall. We've got Bree Estudia. Evelyn Jewel is not here. She's on the soccer field. Grayly Weiss is not here. Let's see, is Kendall here? The weather's in traffic. It's really bad, so she's probably going to have to make... Holly Carter, she finished fifth overall. Natalie Burge is not here, but she finished second overall. 1911. Renne Pilstrum and Sophie... Sam Cannon. And these are my two managers. I'm telling you all, they do a lot. So our managers, I have them at like mile one and mile two yelling times at these runners and writing the times down, and I keep that data. And they are like moms of the team. They are keeping everything moving so that we can coach. So I'm telling you, managers, top-notch. And that's all we've got. We need a picture.
Yeah, we'd like to get a group photo. Need to have two of us?
I can fit everyone. I think if they're right.
I'm just going to get Kendall hers. Jaden, I miss Jaden. It got stuck. Jaden. Jaden isn't... Oh, great. She is on our varsity team. Excellent. There you go.
Great, congratulations. I want to congratulate all of our student athletes who are here today. Let's give them all one big round of applause. Thank y'all for how y'all represent your schools and the Soto County schools. I want to thank the coaches and principals for your support of these student athletes. Also, I want to thank the parents and family members who came today for your support of the Soto County schools. Those of you who were here for the state championship recognition, you're welcome to stay for the board meeting, but if you would like to leave, now would be a great time to leave. Great seat. I'll thank y'all. Congratulations again. No attorney report. We need a motion to approve the minutes of November 20, 2025. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda. Line item A to F, F. Your recommendation, Mr. Austin?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chase, do business. Line item A.
Seal bid for the Lake Cornet Middle School Gym Roof Repair Project, open on October 30th. Eleven bids were received and are listed into board packet. I am recommending approval of the lowest of best bid from Dynamic National Roofing and Renovations.
Mr. Austin, do I have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the bid from Dynamic National for the gymnasium roof repair project at Lake Cornet Middle.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item B, Mr. Chase.
I'm requesting that the board's permission to enter into a contractual agreement with Dynamic National Roofing and Renovations for the roof replacement project at Lake Cornet Middle School.
Mr. Austin, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Dynamic National for the gym roof repair project at Lake Cornet Middle.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item C, Mr. Chase.
Included in your board packet is a letter from the principal of Fernando High School with supporting documentation, an assistant principal ordered additional 30-yard roll-off dumpsters without realizing the plant maintenance handles these orders and issued, and issues the purchase orders. The assistant principal is now made aware of the proper procedures and corrective controls have been implemented to prevent any reoccurrence.
Mr. Austin, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request by the vendor, Fernando High School.
Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item D, Mr. Chase.
Also in your board packet is an application to purchase a new activity bus for career tech pending approval by the board and the Mississippi Department of Education. The vendor is on state contract. Our required quotes have been obtained, and the bus is budgeted in the vocational funds. It will be paid for using industry grant funds.
Mr. Austin, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request to purchase the activity bus for career tech.
Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item E, Mr. Chase.
All right. Statement of revenues. The expenditures revenue collections through October for general funds are $90 million, 552,458, which is less than 1% higher than FY '25 revenues at $90 million, 192,590. The increase is due to the increased valuation of Avalorm and increased MSF. Revenues for all funds are $102 million, 136,745, which is 2% higher than FY '25. General fund expenditures through October are $107 million, 738,415, which is an increase over the FY '25 expenditures of $86 million, 655,563. Expenditures for all funds are $126 million, 140,628, which includes construction expenditures. The increase in expenditures is in line with the budget and continues to trend 2% more than budget projections.
Mr. Austin, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the state revenue expenditures for October 2025.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item F, Mr. Chase.
All right. Combined balance sheet. The fund balance for all general funds is $180 million, 510,575, which is down 2% from FY '25, which was at $184 million, 685,060.
Mr. Austin, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend to the board to approve the combined balance sheet for October 2025.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item G, Mr. Chase.
All right. Statement of cash flow. October cash balance for district maintenance is $180 million, 855,974, which is 83% of the cash balance for all funds, standing at $218 million, 989,115. The amount invested was Smith Sheldon and Regions Banks at the end of October is $52 million, 286,618.
Mr. Austin, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the statement of cash flow for October 2025.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Line item H, Mr. Chase.
All bank statements have been reconciled with no exceptions.
Great job on that, Mr. Chase.
Mr. Austin, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the certification of bank reconciliations for October 2025.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander, line item I.
Personnel this afternoon. Page 21 to recommendations. Page 3 is personnel changes. Page 4 is a memo for myself to request approval up to five days, 40 hours administrative leave between December 10, 2025 and January 9 of 2026, and the event school is closed till later this mess due to inclement weather conditions. This leave will be granted to those who rest in 230-day full-time employees. Page 5 is a quest for additional pay provided by Carroll England for federal programs. This request for teachers, following teachers to work as after-school tutors for the Palmer Home. It will be a total of 300 hours, and that will begin 12 over and go through 630, $26.30 per hour.
Mr. Austin, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel's presentation.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Line item J, Mr. Culver. We have been thinking.
Yes, sir, and I can support executive session.
Line item P, Mr. Hindley.
Mr. Chairman, we ask student matters to address in executive session.
A public comment. As a board, we welcome public participation in our board meetings. While this is not a debate session, a question and answer session, we reserve this time at our regular board meetings for public comment and for citizens who are requested to appear. Board policy allows 30 minutes for public comment. Public comment involving student matters or personnel matters must be heard one at a time in executive session. Each person who wishes to comment will have up to five minutes to speak until the third minute time limit is reached. When asked for public comment, please state your name. If you have a student matter or personnel matter, please state that information as well.
Take a moment, Mr. Austin.
Yes, sir, I will. We had, as people entered today, we had two people who signed up for a public comment, and that was Ms. Pegram and Mr. Crawford. I'll ask Ms. Pegram, would you like to come forward at this time? And just for the record, you state your name at the beginning for the minutes, and then you'll have five minutes for public comment.
Okay. My name is Pam Pegram, and I've been here before, and I'm back. And not because I enjoy being here or in this position, but because I believe deeply in protecting children, and I believe that children must come, their protection must come before protecting adults, or protecting positions, or protecting perceptions. You know, it's so interesting as I sat there and watched all of those young athletes walk up here and be acknowledged, they're the same age as my granddaughter, who was a victim of sexual battery. And they are not equipped to handle the sexual prowess of a 25-year-old adult. So I hope looking at those athletes kind of gave you some insight into what has happened in our family and why it is not okay. Ms. Hindley wrote a letter willingly, wrote a letter of support for an individual who pled guilty to sexual battery, and she continues to sit on this board, refusing to withdraw her letter after she heard the details of what happened to the victim, after she heard the assaults, the out-loud assaults of the victim, as she heard so many details that even the grown men in the media said it was incredibly hard to listen to the testimony. And yet she just refused to withdraw her letter. I don't understand. I cannot understand. You're a woman. I cannot understand. And a mom, how you can think that you should support a predator over a child. I don't understand it. Your decision has only harmed our family, but the community's trust. I appreciate all of you who have signed and have asked her to resign. I appreciate all of you who signed the resolution. It really does make a difference. And, Mr. Austin, I don't think you were able to sign that resolution, but we would sure love to see you write a letter in support of that resolution so that we can forward it to all of the legislators. I think that your voice is important, and I think that it matters. My question today is super simple, and it's the question that every parent, every teacher, every student deserves to have asked out loud. Does Ms. Hindley's continued presence on this board serve the best interest of the children that you all are appointed to protect? Even when your authority is limited, your voice is not, your stance is not, and your leadership is not. And so it's super important that today that you understand that, yes, I'm standing here for my family, but I'm also standing here for your family. I mean, I'm fighting not only for my kids and my grandchildren, but for yours too. Like, there has to be some people stand up and understand that your position and your power is super important, and the goal here is to protect children. Like, we have got to stop this. Have y'all seen all of the arrests that have been made since? Have you seen? And most of the children are either abused by someone at school, someone at church, or someone in their own home. Well, you have a great opportunity to fight against the ones that happen in a school, right? You have a great opportunity to stand against that. As long as someone in leadership stands for what is wrong, man, I will stand for what is right. Not for my family, I'm late, but for your family, for this community, and for every child who deserves to feel safe in a classroom, in a church, and even in their own home. Ms. Hindley, I ask you again to please resign. You have betrayed the trust of the community. You have abused your authority, and you have forsaken the children that you were elected to protect. And we ask that you place that down and allow someone to feel your position, who will fight for the children and who will make better decisions on their behalf. We would love for you to tell us why you choose to stand firm and not do that when you've shown that you hear more about a predator than a child.
Yep.
Thank you. Well, that's a shame, because if you want to stand firm on a position, you should at least be able to communicate to us why. We would love to hear that. Try to understand your perspective and understand where you're coming from, because from where we are, it makes no sense. And it's really, it's really a disgrace and a disservice to our community. Thank you.
Mr. Crawford?
Mr. Crawford.
Speak, state your name also, and you also have five minutes for public comment.
Jay Crawford. Yeah, I just wanted to extend a heartfelt gratitude for letting, y'all letting me exercise my constitutional rights. It means a lot to me. Merrickan Adams is still denying me my constitutional rights, and him doing that is spitting on the grave, metaphorically speaking, of my forefathers who fought and died for me to have this right. And I wish Fox 13 News was here like they were last time, because I was wanting to address them, because they ignore my messages, because my little civil rights violation is not sensational enough. It's not sensational enough, this controversy that we got going on here. So they ignore me. But I didn't come to talk about that. I came to talk about character. The main goal of education should be character development, and I think a character flaw that gets overlooked is nihilism, right? A lot of educators are nihilistic. Nihilism is a pretentious display of surface-level knowledge. Albert Einstein said, "I know less than 1% of all that is to know." And he was a pretty humble guy, right? But there's people that have way lower IQs than him that are very pretentious, and that's bad character. Isaac Newton said that what we know is a drop, and what we don't know is an ocean. So if we're going to get deep, I mean, this will never happen, but if we're going to get deep in knowledge, we got to go back to theology. But that's never going to be taught in school, because we don't have anybody qualified to teach it. But I'm not here to bash education. I support education. I just want to see it do better in character development. I worked at the school, and it wasn't about character development. It was all about knowledge. Apostle Paul writes in 1 Corinthians 8 verse 1, "Knowledge puffs up, but love edifies." We have to get back to love. We have to get back to showing the most sincere, genuine act of love as we can. And that's what I do every day, try to think of ways I can express love. And I think that's what teachers need to do, right? So I can only speak to you. I don't know any teachers, so if y'all can just take my ideas that I'm trying to imbue to you and imbue to them, that would be great. I love you all. I love each and every one of you. I'm going to say that every time I come down here, because if I don't say it, it's not going to effectuate, right? If the word love is going to be effective, we got to start saying it, because that word hate is very effective, and a lot of people are very bold in saying it. But we don't have enough bold people saying we love when I... So I can only speak to you, I don't know any teachers, so if y'all can just take my ideas that I'm trying to imbue to you and imbue to them, that would be great. Um, I love you all. I love each and every one of you. I'm gonna say that every time I come down here, because if I don't say it, it's not gonna effectuate, right? If the word love is gonna be affect, uh, effective, we got to start saying it, because that word hate is very effective, and a lot of people are, are very bold in saying it, but we don't have enough bold people saying we love one another. So if they will be bold, I will be bold. I love you all. God bless you all.
Thank you. Now we uh have concluded the public comment portion of the board meeting. We do have uh one, uh, we had two requests up here, which were on the agenda. One, uh, one person reached out in advance that they were not gonna be able to be here. Uh, next we have K S. K S, if you please come forward at this time, and you state your name for the minutes, and also you'll have 10 minutes for your request up here.
My name's Katie Sasso. Michelle, last time you had, I had come unprepared. I spoke simply what I felt. This time, this time I've had time, and I did really well in English and speech class. It's gonna be fun. I did some research on Bible verses. I know Ms. Kim asked you last time to, to look at us as we speak to you. I would appreciate that as well. Specifically about crime, which I believe you are suffering from, and your steadfast refusal to resign as requested by many of your constituents and this school board, as well as those about protecting children, something you didn't place a high priority on when you chose to write a character letter for a convicted sexual predator. "The desires of the eyes and the pride of life is not of the Father, but from the world. Before destruction, a man's heart is haughty, but humility comes before honor." "The Lord tears down the house of the proud. The Lord detests all the proud of heart. Be sure of this, they will not go unpunished." "In his pride, the wicked man does not seek him in all his thoughts. There is no room for God." "But when his heart became arrogance and hardened with pride, he was deposed from his royal throne and stripped of his glory." "Then people brought little children to Jesus, but the disciples rebuked them. Jesus said, 'Let the little one, little children, come to me.' See that you did not despise one of these little ones.'" "You sat there last month smacking your gum, looking at us as if we are the problem." "And that's after having to be asked to give us the basic respect of looking as the eye, a concept parents teach their children when they are young. So let's educate you on the harm you are doing to this community." "By continuing to sit on a school board that does not want you after having victims shamed and blamed under oath after over 65,000 pages of evidence were entered into the courts, and you continue to refuse to retract your letter or even apologize." "You've been asked repeatedly to step down by your fellow board members, by the victim's family, who is here today. She just asked you." "By the community. Let's get one thing clear, Michelle. You are not the victim in this. You are simply suffering the consequences of your actions." "You have several times had the opportunity to retract your support of the predator, and make no mistake, it is support." "While you say you did not testify for the defense, you were given the opportunity at that sentencing to retract your letter, and you declined. That would logically mean you are still in support of the predator. It's my assumption. Gee, don't say anything different." "You stated in the letter you wrote that you were writing on behalf of the predator, and then stated in your non-apology Facebook post that you didn't support her actions. Well, I mean, who does support those actual actions?" "So I got curious and did some research on what it actually means to do something on behalf of someone. The very words you used in your letter." "Cambridge Dictionary defines this as done for another person's benefit or support, because you were representing the interests of that person." "Very definition is you were representing Lindsey Whiteside's interests." "If you were unaware, as you claim, of the charges and the seriousness of the claims against the predator, that is a failing on your part, because I don't know about you, but if I was asked to write a character letter for someone on trial, I would definitely make sure I knew whether charges were required, even thought about it. I'm in no position like you are." "You used your position on this very school board when you advised you were a school board member, which you did two times in your letter. You tried to use your power on this school board to sway that decision." "You make claims about being proud to be in this community, and you, you have failed this community on several occasions. I am aware of a fundraiser for the American Cancer Society several years ago that you and your husband donated a custom bike to. When you deemed those ticket sales not sufficient, you determined you would not hold up your end of the bargain, and you pulled the bike." "You left the organizers of that to call each person and explain this. Lawsuits were threatened. They were accused of falsifying. They took that because you guys pulled the bike." "Your continued presence on this school board is an affront to the victim you stand, you stood in front of while refusing to retract your letter. To all who say that all you did was write a letter, no. No. You refuse to retract a letter to support and sway the sentencing of a sexual predator." "If you didn't know you wrote it, it sure as heck knew by the time you got on that seat." "Your ability to refuse explanation to the victim's grandmother, who has asked you multiple times, why? Why?" "Right here is an arrogance. I have a hard time telling you. I don't understand. When I hurt someone, however unintentionally." "I want to explain myself." "The statistics on sexual assault are appalling. Over 50% of women and 33% of men will at some point in their lives experience the range of sexual assault, whether it's children, adults, whatever." "If you were to look around this room right now, the sad fact is that there is a high likelihood a majority will have experienced it themselves, many choosing not to say anything or report it. For every victim that has the bravery to come forward, there are a multitude who don't. What if nothing happens? What if people don't believe me? What if I get blamed?" "Because what was she wearing is all too common a lot, or it was consensual. She was drunk. She didn't tell someone right away, or any number of other reasons. People like you used to get back to the status quo and move on with life." "Which makes what this victim did in stepping forward so very incredibly brave, not knowing that someone like you was waiting to make excuses for the predator's actions by saying your daughter had a good experience with her. How do you know something didn't happen to your daughter?" "It stops here, Michelle. The excuses that I didn't know is it wasn't support. My daughter asked me to." That's classic, teach her your daughter and move the bus. Or whatever else you tell yourself to sleep at night. "As someone who grapples with the forever impacts of child and sexual assault and adult sexual assault in my own life and past, I am going to look you in the eyes when I tell you that we will not forget your other lack of support for the victim, your complete lack of empathy for the family as you sit on your throne of pride, and you will answer to your creator one day." "Let's stop making excuses for people like her. Let's get these letters out. Find out other teachers have said something, done something in support of a sexual predator. Let's kick them out." "Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes the uh public comment and request up here portion of the board.
I need a motion for consideration of close session in terms of whether the board shall enter an executive session for the following matters. Number one, student matters of early graduation. Two, residency matters. Three, student discipline matters. Four, property contract matters. I need a motion.
I make that motion.
Property contract matters?
Personnel contract.
Personnel matters and personal.
And personnel contract matters.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So I need a motion and vote. Vote, vote aye.
I make that motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chase will come back and inform you whether we stand executive session. The next board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January the 8th, 2026 at 3:00 P M. Thank y'all for coming today.